To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda is our auditor's financial report. Bob?
We began 2021 with the general fund cash balance of $14,988,895. With projected miscellaneous revenue, property tax, and deducting the estimated circuit breaker, total funds available are $66,739,81. We deduct the encumbrances, the budget, the minimum balance, and add back in 2% of anticipated unused 2021 budget. Our beginning net balance was $6,120,963. We've approved $1,718,835 of additional appropriations for the general fund so far this year, and there are $67,500 requested for today's meeting. So our available appropriations as of right now are $4,266,044. With the revenue, the month of August is not significant. Oops. Not a significant month as far as revenues coming in. We have some of the same revenues that come in monthly. You see like O-1-on-one, LIT, that comes in every month, and we did receive some alcoholic beverage excise tax. But there's really nothing of real note here in the revenues that I really saw and noted. So move down to the next section being the fund balances. Fund number 1,000 is the general fund. We have a balance at the end of August of $12,929,486. And we did, of course, spend more than what we took in being in non-property tax month. The other funds that I noted, there's only a couple of them here. 4710 is one I usually mention, and that is the self-insurance fund. We did spend more in August than what we brought in. We have an $8.65 million balance as of right now. One I just said marked was 4818. And just to let you know where we're standing, and this is where the bond proceeds went for the fairgrounds project, and at the end of August, we still had $969,000 that was not spent out of the bond proceeds. And, oops. Get this thing to move here. I believe, I think that was all that I had noted. If there's any questions?
Any questions for Bob? Hearing none. We'll go to our treasures report. Jennifer?
Good morning. For the month of August, we had $80,028.31 in interest. August was a good Stiefel Nicholas account. Interest earnings, $29,000 there. So between the bank accounts and the investments, investments for the past two months have been pretty good, and I was actually able to buy some U.S. Treasuries yesterday, over 1%, which is the first time I've purchased anything in a while, and at over 1 was pretty good. I know it doesn't sound good, but it is. As far as the fund distribution, $345,778.81 for the general fund to date or through August, and that's at about 69% of the revised general fund budget of $500,000 that I expect for the year. Between the self-insurance interest and the ARPA funds' interest going to the general fund, that was about $16,000, $17,000 going to the general fund from those balances. And that was all I had for this month.
Any questions for Jennifer? Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is our public comment concerning our agenda items. Is there any public comment related to any of those? Seeing...oh. Oh, I thought Max was trying to get my attention. Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to our 2022 budget approvals. So first up, we have Resolution 21-28-CL.
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution 2021-28-CL.
Second? I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve Resolution 2021-28-CL fixing the 2022 coroner's salary. Discussion. Hearing none. That's just a straight vote, isn't it? Okay. Yes. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have Resolution 29.
Make a motion. We approve Resolution 2021-29-CL.
Second? I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve Resolution 2021-29-CL confirming the 2022 funding for intellectual disability centers. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have Resolution 30.
I make a motion. We approve Resolution 2021-30-CL.
Second? I have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution 2021-30-CL confirming the 2022 funding for mental health centers. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have ordinance 2021.
Make a motion. We approve ordinance number 2021-21-CL.
Second? I have a motion on the floor to approve the ordinance 2021-21-CL fixing of the 2022 salaries and grids for our county employees for second reading, and that would be by roll call.
Yeah, one thing to note, that just the difference between this is a second reading and the first reading, there are a couple small changes, and it should be in your packet correctly, but up on the screen, if you can see my little yellow areas, and there was one I forgot to put in there. But we changed from the first reading to the second reading, we changed the coroner's salaries, and now I've added the nonmerit chief deputy sheriff in there for Terry's position, and also the sheriff was a little bit of change from what we originally had in the first reading. So.
Okay, thank you, Bob. We'll go ahead and do roll call.
Underwood?
Aye.
Basham?
Aye.
Dolam?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Murray?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And Vernon?
Aye.
Ordinance 2021-21-CL passes seven zero on second final reading.
Next, we have ordinance 22.
Make a motion. We approve ordinance 2021-22-CL.
Second? I have a motion on the floor to approve ordinance 2021-22-CL approval of our 2022 tippecanoe county appropriation and tax rates on second reading. That being an ordinance, it's also by roll call.
And this one, too, if I could make a little comment first. If you notice on here, the adopted tax levy for the general fund, the O-101, it says $30 million, and that's not what we approved for revenue for the general fund, and that's because with the revenue for the general fund, we try and do a net after tax caps are taken out, and this came to about like $29,900, within a couple thousand dollars of 30 million. So we did put the 30 million in there. So, just to let you know. And then, of course, the other changes from, the whole budget hearings are reflected, these numbers are less than what they were the first reading.
Aye.
Dolam?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Murray?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Vernon?
Aye.
And Underwood?
Aye.
Ordinance 2021-22-CL passes seven zero on second final reading.
Next, we have ordinance 23.
Make a motion. We approve ordinance 2021-23-CL.
Second? I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve ordinance 2022-23-CL, which is approving the 2022 TS, that's solid waste budget, appropriation and tax rates on second reading. Now, I'm going to try to read the whole acronym. That is by roll call also.
Dolam?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Murray?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Vernon?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
And Basham?
Aye.
Ordinance 2021-23-CL passes seven zero on second final reading.
Next, we have ordinance 24. Second reading.
Make a motion. We approve ordinance 2021-24-CL.
Second? I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve ordinance 2021-24-CL, which is approval of the 2022 Litt-All-We-All Conservancy District appropriation and tax rates on second reading. Roll call.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Murray?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Vernon?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Basham?
Aye.
And Dolam?
Aye.
Ordinance 2021-24-CL passes seven zero on second final reading.
Next, we have ordinance 25.
Make a motion. We approve ordinance number 2021-25-CL.
Second? I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve ordinance 21-25-CL, which is approval of the 2022 recorders perpetuation budget for Fund 1189. Second reading. Discussion. If not, roll call.
Aye.
Vernon?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Basham?
Aye.
Dolam?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Ordinance 2021-25-CL passes seven zero on second final reading.
Thank you very much, everyone, especially for your work last month. All right, we'll move on. Yes?
I have one more thing that we did not put on the agenda, which I think we really should approve, and that would be approving the salary statements as amended based on the actions of the budget hearings. And I don't have those in front of me, but, you know, from all the changes we made, you know, from the coroner changes and the position changes, so we need to have those approved as amended.
Would that just be a, just a simple motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. We approve the salary statements as amended.
Second? I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the 2022 salary statements as amended through our budget process. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? They are approved. Okay, now we'll move on into our consent agenda, which also has our minutes from our August 10th meeting. And are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda before we approve? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda and the minutes as presented.
Second? I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the consent agenda with all the items therein as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Additional appropriations, Superior Court 2.
Motion to approve Superior Court 2 General Fund 1,000 appropriation of $7,500. Second?
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Hamilton, a second from Councilwoman Dolam, to approve the additional appropriation for Superior Court 2 for $7,500 for health and medical professionals. Discussion.
Judge Myers couldn't attend today, but it's the increase of evaluations is what this would be for, to pay those bills.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have the prosecutor, Drug Enforcement Fund 2507.
I move that we, here for approval, appropriation for the Drug Enforcement Fund 2507 of $5,000 as indicated. Do you second?
Oh, second, sorry.
That's okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Drug Enforcement Fund 2507 appropriation for $5,000. Discussion.
Thank you. This is our fund that we receive drug forfeiture, drug dealer forfeiture money from court orders, and this is to pay our Caliber, which is our software system we use with law enforcement.
Thank you, Pat. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next up, we have Public Defender Fund user, user fund, user fees fund, $1,200.
Motion for approval for Public Defender user fee fund, $1,200 appropriation for $80,000 for other professional services. I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Hamilton, a second from Councilwoman Dolam, to approve the Public Defender user fee fund, $1,200 appropriation for $80,000 for professional services. Discussion.
This is just for...
Push the button. Amy, thank you.
This is just for professional services. It's the user fee fund for clients are assessed a fee to reverse county, so if we use it to pay for other professional services.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have a salary statement.
Motion for approval of salary statement 2021 of $84,768.
I second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Hamilton, a second from Councilwoman Dolam, to approve the 2021 salary statement for the Public Defender, which is, you can see in the description, the $84,768. Discussion.
This is just the, if you remember during budget hearings for 2022, we asked to combine two part-time and make it a full-time. It's just we needed an accurate salary statement, and the commissioners approved us to do one of those positions for 2021, so we're not so short on our conflict division.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next up, the sheriff.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appropriation from Litt Public Safety County Share Fund 1170 in the amount of $601,712.
Second?
I'm not sure who that was. It's pretty much a tie. Okay, I have got a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the appropriation for the sheriff for Litt Public Safety County share of $601,712.
You guys did the big one first. I was hoping we'd get there eventually.
Build up.
Now, what this does is, these are vehicles and equipment we would ask for in 2022. It allows us to do it now, to get pricing and the orders, because things are taking longer to get now because of COVID. So this helps us get to where we need to be for next year using money that's still available this year.
Discussion. Kathy, you might want to share a little bit of why we decided to go this route.
There's currently $406 million in that Litt Public Safety, I mean, excuse me, 4.6...
If there's 406, can we talk about some other stuff?
Yeah, we better get more stuff.
Anybody need anything?
No wonder you are here today. So, you know, during budget hearings, we discussed this and realized it would be the appropriate thing to do in '21 because of being able to get a better deal on the cars. And as we've all noted this year, the sheriff and his department has done a great job in regards to tracking vehicles and getting us quarterly reports, so that we're not seeing surprises of large amounts coming through. So I would encourage this board to approve this request.
Thank you.
One thing, just as a note, in the '21 budget, in the Litt Public Safety budget, the revenue exceeded the budget by $708,908. With this request and the one from TIMA, that's $708,613, which means that we still are $295 under what our revenue is, and we will not have, use all of the budget for Litt Public Safety. So we still will be building up the cash balance in Litt Public Safety a little bit after '21 is completed.
Was this in the budget currently, or did we already take it out of the budget? Did we not have it in the budget?
It was not in the budget.
For 2022?
For '22, it was not in the budget.
Okay.
Good question. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have Fund 1175 appropriation.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appropriation of the misdemeanor fund 1175 as presented.
Second?
I have a motion on the floor from the minutes, from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the misdemeanor fund 1175 appropriation of $47,991. Discussion.
This is what we get every year, but this year, we want to use it, well, for next year, now we want to use it for tasers and other equipment for the jail. We want to be able to get everybody their own taser, so we're not swapping and things break, and just get everybody updated on equipment.
Okay.
And these funds are received the 1st of August, and this is half of the total, because we always separate half of it for sheriff, half of it for community corrections, and so community corrections is coming up in a minute for their half.
Okay.
We have 400 million, right, Jason?
Yeah.
That's what I heard, too.
460 million.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have Law Enforcement Fund 9603.
I'll make a motion that we approve the grant appropriation for Fund 9603 fiscal year '22 as presented.
Second?
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Law Enforcement Assistant Grant Fund 9603 fiscal year 2022 grant appropriation of $13,650. Discussion.
So this is our drug-free money. We're going to use it for PVTs, which are portable breath test instruments for OWI investigations.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved.
Thank you.
Next, we have a salary statement. Don't escape yet, Sheriff.
Sheriff, don't leave yet. Yeah, approve the salary statement 2020.
Unless you just said it.
We have 406 million. Terry said he'd just do it for free.
Yeah. And this is for the nonmerit chief deputy position in the total of $78,885.
Second?
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the salary statement for 2021 for the sheriff for nonmerit chief deputy for $78,885. Discussion.
Just allows me to keep Terry. As we've, some of you have learned through this process, you can, the sheriff has, I have the opportunity to pick who I want as chief deputy. And as I explained before, where we are currently as a department, to keep us healthy and moving forward, the best thing to do is to keep Terry in his current position and work towards training someone else in years to come to take that over. But I think that's the best move for the department. In this case, it saves the county money. And I'm just appreciative that Terry, when I approached him about it, was open to it, and this Friday, we'll swear him back in. So, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Next, we have Community Corrections, misdemeanor fund appropriation.
I'll make a motion. We approve the misdemeanor fund 1175 in the amount of $47,991.
Second? I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Basham, to approve the misdemeanor fund appropriation 1175 of $47,991 for community corrections. Discussion.
Morning.
Morning.
As Bob mentioned, this is our portion of the misdemeanor fund. We use this portion to help with our leases for our vehicles for our department.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have Fund 9178 grant appropriation.
Make a motion. We approve the Gateway to Hope Fund 9178, the grant appropriation in the amount of $5,850.
Second? I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Basham, to approve the grant appropriation Gateway to Hope Fund 9178 fiscal year '22 in the amount of $5,850. Discussion.
So we were fortunate, again, to receive this grant from the Drug Free Coalition. It goes to help fund our peer support services that are in cooperation with the health department within the facility.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have TIMA.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve for TIMA the appropriation out of the Litt Public Safety County Share Fund 1170 for $106,901.
Second?
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilman Murray, to approve the, for the TIMA Litt Public Safety County Share Fund 1170 appropriation of $106,901. Discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning.
These, this fund will, or this will fund 800 radios, 800 megahertz radios in the MOC, both mobile and portable. So they're at the end of life, and they can't be supported. And we actually have one that passed away, so this is just in time.
And I would add that during budget hearings, Ben and I, in speaking with Smokey, this is something that would have been budgeted in the, out of the commissioner's budget for '22, but that budget could not support these radios. So this is very appropriate use for our public safety money to purchase these this year, as we're hearing that, you know, we're having radios die, and we need to make sure that mobile unit is up to date and has functioning equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have coroner salary statement.
I'll make a motion that we approve the salary statement for 2022 in the coroner's department.
Second?
I'm here in place of carrying.
Hold on just a second. Surely, I'm just going to read it off. I've got a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilman Murray, to approve the salary statement for the coroner for $42,603 for deputy coroner. Okay, now, discussion.
Thanks. This is the current position, and it's actually office manager slash deputy coroner, so that's just flipped. She's currently a comment three. When we did the classifications and added the new positions for carry, they put the position that is a blend of office and deputy coroner in the pole nonmerit positions. So we had them to run the current one through, and they felt that it should also be in the pole nonmerit. So that's going from the comment three to the pole nonmerit two.
Okay, thank you.
So, again, when Ben and I continue to meet with the coroner, this is just being proactive and looking at the department and getting people paid for the positions and for the duties that they're doing.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Thank you. Next, we have fairgrounds appropriation.
Mr. President, I have moved that we accept the, from the general fund, the future utilities of the fairground of $60,000.
Second? I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the additional appropriation for fairgrounds for $60,000 for utilities. Discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This should get me through the rest of the year, I would think. We have some unknowns. A lot of the first half of the year was construction costs with doors open and windows not in. So we also have about $10,000 bill that we're going to send to the fair. That's our total utilities, and they're going to pay that. So we'll get some back. So that's where we are.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Surveyor Fund 1158 appropriation.
I make a motion to approve the General Drain Fund 1158 in the amount of $2,050,000.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Richard, a second from Councilman Basham, to approve the appropriation for the General Drain Fund 1158 in the amount of $2,050,000. Discussion.
Good morning, good morning, Zach Beasley. I'm here before you request an approval of the General Drain Fund. These monies are for reconstruction and maintenance projects for day-to-day operations at my office. Basically, this fund and these monies are used to front the cost of projects that may or may not have enough money in the maintenance fund themselves, and that as drain assessments are collected, it's paid back. So it's, these are revolving dollars, so respectfully request your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
And this request, I shouldn't even mention this, but your request is not for 2 billion, is it?
2 million, not billion.
Okay, because it's got billion on the form, it's got 2 billion.
Yeah, no, no.
And we thought Kathy's slip-up was.
2 million.
Yes, 2 million.
Yes.
Three extra zeros, that's all. All right, any other discussion?
Yes, it doesn't show up that way on the agenda, so I'm not sure how that happened, but thanks for the. Good, thanks for the clarification, Bob.
Okay, any, if there are no, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Health Department Fund 4118.
Make a motion, we approve Donation Fund 4118 in the amount of $1,445.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Basham, to approve the Donation Fund 4118 appropriation for $1,445 for the Health Department. Discussion.
So this pays for the hotel when we have to house somebody.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have Fund 9168.
Make a motion, we approve WCI slash FIMR Fund 9168 slash CC22, grant appropriation in the amount of $2,500.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Basham, to approve the Grant Appropriation Fund 9168 slash CC22 in the amount of $2,500. Discussion.
So this is from Clinton County, it's not from their health department, it's from another organization, so that we will continue to review fetal infant mortality deaths in Clinton County. So we went to the counties, because we have a grant that covers 12 counties, but no other county helps pay for any of it. And so if they're going to continue for us to review, we house the person and pay for, like, her technology and stuff, so we're going to, we just ask for some money if we're going to continue interviewing in the 12 counties. And so Clinton County agreed to this portion to cover their deaths.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have Fund 9178 appropriation.
Make a motion to approve Gateway to Hope Fund 9178 for fiscal year '22 in the amount of $7,313.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Basham, to approve the Gateway to Hope Fund 9178 fiscal year '22, grant appropriation of $7,313. Discussion.
This is from Drug Free Coalition grant, and it pays for recovery coaches.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have committee reports. Don't hear any other business.
I do have other business. You were handed this morning a salary statement from the Health Department. I'd like to make a motion to put this on the agenda, or put, to approve the salary statement from the Health Department as presented to us.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Dolam, to approve the 2021 calendar year salary statement for the Health Department for a public health vaccinator. You all have a copy at your spots.
So there's three things, the vaccinator, the part-time nurse, and the contact tracer, which is called communications or something like that, the very bottom.
Oh, okay, so those are part-time positions as well?
Yep.
Okay, I didn't see that. All right, thank you for pointing that out. Okay, thank you for pointing that out. Everyone see what all's located on there?
So the COVID fund, the vaccinator is just to help with the clinic, because the volunteers are kind of drizzling, you know, we've been doing it since January 11, and our nurses really can't keep doing it. And so I've been there every day since January 11, just to help out. And then the part-time nurse, we added this, this would be with funds that we received to help with contact tracing, kind of oversee the contact tracers, and just kind of float the vaccine clinic contact tracing and other needs of the Health Department.
I will say Fund 8488, it's a grant fund, and so that's where this is all going to be funded through, is one of the Health Department grants.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, any unfinished or new business? Commissioner FYI.
Good morning, everyone. Just a couple of things, you should have received an invitation to the groundbreaking for expansion at Community Corrections and the addition at the jail. That project is going to have a groundbreaking this Thursday, the 16th, at 2:00 PM at the Community Corrections Facility, so we certainly hope you will join us for that. In addition, the following Thursday, 9/23, we'll be doing a ribbon cutting for the Wi-Fi hotspot at the Point West Mobile Home Park. This is a project that we partnered with TIPMOT and OKRA to provide a hotspot for TSC students to be able to do homework at various, at three different spots across the county. So we're excited about that project that's up and running right now. And lastly, the, I just want to give a shout out to Monica in Zach's office for her WOW program, which is going to be starting this week and running the next, basically, running through, I think, the 28th, if I'm correct. She is in need of volunteers to participate in that program. If anybody's not familiar with that program, that's where sixth graders, Zach, is that right, or fifth graders? Fifth and sixth graders, students in our county get out on the river to actually teach these folks about the environmental impact of the Wabash River and get them acclimated to the river as an actual asset to this community. It's a wonderful program, Monica works her tail off on this, and it's immensely popular. If you have a few hours, actually, it's more like over a half a day to volunteer for that, it would be, it's phenomenal, and you will, you will take a lot away from that. So if you need more information on that, Monica can get that to you, we hope you'll consider. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Byers, do you have some additional information?
First, if you help Monica, do not cook, because she fired me way back when, so apparently I can't do hamburgers right. What I'm bringing to you is information we just picked up this past couple weeks, or past couple of days. We got some things to discuss, you all handle the funds. Our extension service, currently, we have a contract with Purdue, we pay for five agents. We haven't had full five agents in, I don't know how long. We just found out both our youth agents are now leaving, so that puts us down to just one agent out there in the whole facility. We also just found out through, and actually, it's kind of hot off the press when you say that, Sharon is at, they're now asking all these extension agents to go out and find an extra $4,000 per extension agent to help cover their bill, because Purdue, since they flatlined for so many years, and since Mitch won't raise tuition, the extension service is really getting the short, short end here. So we really don't know what's going to be happening throughout the state on the extension services. We're also heard, I've heard a couple of counties that just broke away from Purdue, and they're hiring their own youth agents to do things. So this is just an FYI on that part of it. I know you handle the purses, we got to deal with the contract. Tom met with their district director the other day and kind of chit-chat back and forth on that part, so we're just making sure everybody's kind of on the same page right now. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a difficult situation. Thank you, Dave. Any other information?
I thought we were going to sell that property. We still own that property at Old 52.
Yeah.
We're going to move them over to the Y, right?
Yeah.
The old Y.
Right. Okay. All right. Next meeting, do we need that, October 12? We typically don't have, do we have that typically on our agenda?
October 12.
Yeah.
Columbus Day.
Well, you just have next meeting as, it's like, isn't it already scheduled? Okay, I'm not sure why that was one of our agenda items, that's why I was kind of like, what? Okay, public comment. No one's racing to the microphone. If not, I'll take the last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.